Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to our City Council Successor Agency Public Finance Authority Meeting, beginning of November 5th, 2020, at 6:00. And before we start, we'd like to invite everyone to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We do have one. It's one of the discussion items, 6.8. The police chief had put that item on, and he's requested to pull it.
So pull that for now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for the council to approve the agenda with that one item being pulled?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I also wrote aye. Under awards, presentations, proclamation... Let's try that again. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations, we have two items. Our first item is Mid Valley Disposal Quarterly Report. We have Mariana Waller, Recycling Coordinator.
Hello.
Hello.
Shannon, when you get a moment, do you mind enabling my screen sharing, please?
Go right ahead.
There you go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council Members. My name is Mariana Fusich Waller with Mid Valley Disposal, and I am here to present to you our third quarter activities report. With me also is Virginia Fowler, our Director of Recycling. We can answer any questions you may have after the presentation. Some of the things we are highlighting this evening are our site assessments, recycling audits, outstanding recycling programs, upcoming events, and lastly, CalRecycle updates. We conducted 116 site assessments this quarter. That is 116 times Mid Valley has been out in your community, visiting businesses and multifamily complexes. During our visits, we discuss implementation, conduct waste assessments, provide education and resources for illegal dumping and bulky items. We received 38 contamination tags this quarter. After providing education, each incident was resolved. A few of our outstanding commercial businesses in our recycling program are Subway and New Hong Kong Restaurant. They are doing a fantastic job at diverting recyclable materials away from the landfill. As you know, next Saturday, November 14th, we are hosting our semi-annual fall cleanup event. This will be from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Mid Valley Disposal Yard. As for CalRecycle updates, the effective date for SB 1383 is January 1st of 2022. This will affect residential and commercial customers. Regulations take effect on January 1, 2022. In January 2024 jurisdictions are required to enforce... Excuse me, to take enforcement against non-compliant entities. Some of the things your jurisdiction will need to do is to develop an ordinance, establish a food recovery program, and monitor commercial edible food generators. Shown here is another slide of the key dates. In January, we will reach out to city staff to schedule a meeting in which we'll go over SB 1383 in more detail. We are happy to continue serving the community of Kalinga, and at this time, I would like to open the floor to any questions. Okay.
Of course, I'm sorry. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are doing an awesome job for our community. We appreciate you.
Oh, thank you. We're happy to serve. Okay.
Okay, our next item is the presentation of the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2018 through 2019 by our auditor.
All right. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, this is Ryan Jolly. Thank you for having me here this evening. We... This is the first year we've started doing the audit again for the city of Kalinga. For some of those of you that have been around for a little while, we were... We did do the audit for the city several years ago. Last couple of years have been done by Price, Page, and Company. Now, we've started the audits again for the city. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city again and the city staff. I'm just going to go over a few high-level things here on the audit, and then I can answer any questions you might have. As mentioned, this is the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the city of Kalinga. Just beyond the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. We issued an unqualified opinion, meaning we found that the city's books and records to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is a favorable audit opinion, so there were no exceptions to that. Going into the financials, the first two pages beyond the pages three and four is kind of your... The city as a whole on a full accrual basis. There's two different kinds of accounting methods. We use more of a modified accrual basis for your regular accounting, and then when we do the financial statements, we make some adjustments to bring them to full accrual. Your enterprise funds or your business-type activities, those are always on a full accrual, but your other governmental funds, those are more on a modified accrual basis during the year, and then we do some adjustments to full accrual by adding things like your capital assets and your long-term debt for the governmental funds. And so that's kind of a high-level picture of the city with full accrual, with all your assets and liabilities represented there. Page five gets into more of the individual funds, all the governmental funds that the city has. These are your major funds. They meet certain criteria, so they're kind of highlighted and separated up here in the front of the audit. The non-major ones are in the back, and we'll get to those in a minute. The one that's probably most interest to you is the general fund. This is kind of the overall operating fund of the city and conducts most of the major functions of the city. You'll notice the city has a fund balance of $7 million, which is quite healthy. Just want to point out, though, about $4.2 million of that is restricted for emergency medical transportation regarding your ambulance services. So even though that looks quite good at $7 million, we just want to remember that $4.2 million of that's restricted for specific services and isn't just available for the city to spend. Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you tell me what page you're on? I lost the page.
Oh, sorry. I'm on page five.
Thank you.
Yeah. There, under the general fund column, down under the fund balance section, you'll see $7 million is the total fund balance, but if you go up a little bit from there, you'll see some of the restricted fund balances, and one of those is for emergency medical Going down to page seven is pretty much the profit and loss for the general fund for the year. Overall, there was an increase of $4.3 million. Once again, that's largely due to those funds that were received for those emergency services. On pages nine and 10 are your enterprise funds. These are the water, sewer, natural grass, and sanitation. All of these funds are pretty much operating as intended. If you look at page 10 and at the change in net position, they all had an increase. Natural gas and sanitation had a loss this year. Natural gas is still okay. You know, I know those costs fluctuate from year to year, so... But the sanitation, I want to just point out, overall, you have a negative fund balance now of $30,000 in that fund. So it appears that the operating costs for that fund aren't keeping up with the charges for services. So that's something that the city should look a little closer at and see whether those fees need to be increased in order to keep that fund in a positive fund balance situation. Going beyond that is we start with... Well, we have the successor agency, and there's nothing that's operating as intended and nothing unusual there. Then the foot... Then the financial statement footnotes follow, starting on page 15. This gives you more of a detailed explanation of some of those asset and liability accounts, different methods of accounting used, quite a bit of information there that is available to read to provide you with a better understanding of the financial statements. And those go for quite a while. Nothing really out of the ordinary here. On page 35 is the start of the presentation of the city's long-term debt. All of the payments are being made as scheduled, so I don't see any issues there with the payments and the city meeting its obligations there. And then just going down basically to... Once we get past the footnotes, the financial statements, I'll drop down to the page 51. This is your non-major governmental funds, and all of those are also operating as intended. Nothing out of the ordinary with any of those funds this year. And then on page 55 is a letter, another audit letter we provide where we evaluate the city's internal controls and whether there's proper segregation of duties over the main functions of the city. And basically, the main transaction classes that affect the financial statements like cash disbursements, cash receipts, and payroll. And we didn't identify any weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the processes or the segregation of duties that are involved within those processes. Other than that, we also issued a management report. This is our report to the city council, some required communications to you, letting you know that we didn't have any difficulties completing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. There's no new accounting standards that were implemented this year. So really, nothing too out of the ordinary this year with any of those general disclosures we make. So once again, overall, you know, a good audit and a clean audit, and you know, this does bring you current now. I know it's late, but this, you know, getting this one done, we are now current, and we definitely feel comfortable and confident we'll be able to complete the June 30, 2020 audit by March 31 in order to keep the city current on its audit. And so just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to work with the city again and thank the staff, the city staff, for their willingness to work with us and for all the help they provided in order to get this done. If you have any questions, I can address those now.
Any questions, council? Seeing none. Ryan, it's nice to talk to you. Please tell your father hello for us.
I will. Thank you.
All right.
If you ever have any questions, feel free. And if you can always call us, too, if there's any specific questions you have or need any answer, you know, any additional information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, our next item is citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify yourself, and please use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, excuse me, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Before I go any further with this, I've received two anonymous statements, and I'd like to ask Mario, if I may. Is it proper that we would give these statements with anonymous? Or could we request that their name be applied?
There... So people have a First Amendment right to make anonymous comments, so you can ask if they leave their name, but they do not have to.
Okay. I just wanted a legal clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. The first item is changing the guidelines regarding distance, et cetera, on marijuana companies. It says, "I feel that I do not speak alone on this item. It is nothing less than suspicious and also seems to be disrespectful and deceitful to the citizens who were promised them in order to get them to vote in favor of marijuana companies. I was under the impression that this item was squashed by the mayor and other council members. Despite Councilmember Atkinson suddenly changing his previous opinion and stance and starting a marijuana business of his own, I agree with his original stance to not have these companies within the city limits and that they attract criminals and crimes and should be nowhere near schools, children, or neighborhoods. I also find it suspicious that the councilwoman is bringing this item back when she previously stood against it. Could she be being... Could she be being threatened or bribed? I ask that city council keep their original promises to the citizens in which they serve." That's item one. Okay, the next one is discussion regarding Lander Lane. It says, "First, I would like to say that I have no problem with naming another street as a tribute to Ron Lander's career in local politics. I question if the councilperson proposing to do this dude is his way of apologizing for the many insults and accusations he has made toward him, or could it be a way to change the mayor's stance on his agenda? Also, City Councilmember Vossberg has alleged Mayor Lander..." I love this. "...to have committed crimes and is under investigation with the grand jury." Wow. "I would rather wait for the decision by the grand jury, as we certainly wouldn't want to name another street after an alleged criminal." Well, that's a new one on me. Anyway, any other comments? We do have another one.
Nathan, you should be able to unmute yourself and talk.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so first off, Nathan Vossberg, District 3, mayor and council. I never alleged of any crimes. I just want to put that out there. I am the person that did turn in the grand jury report, and it had to do with things of my ideas of how the meeting should be ran. It did not have to do with anything that the anonymous person had stated. I think we all know who that anonymous person is, and it's sad that this continues to go on in this council. And so I'll start. I bet you're wondering why I speak almost every time. The reason is that I care about our community. In fact, I would like to encourage more people to speak. Tonight, I have six items I want to speak about, and I'll try and make it quick. First, I want to address the item on code enforcement. $52K a year is too expensive to pay for two days' worth a week, which is... Would be 16 hours a week, which that comes out to $1,000 roughly a month. That's for... I mean, $1,000 a week, which is roughly $4,000 a month. I know we could probably hire someone part-time that at least the city would have some control under for cheaper than that, and I think that you need to work on a couple more budgets before we start adding positions. And so that would also go with the animal control as well. I would say, hey, you know, let's get some more budgets under the belt that are balanced before you start working on adding things. Second, I would like to give the input on the distance requirements to cannabis operations, and that was not included in passing of the cannabis. That was not included on what people voted on. Just want to make that clear. And you do have a lot of businesses that want to be involved that can't because they can't find space. I would suggest that you table this item and the next item, which would be SCI Consulting, maybe until the next council, so that it can give people more time to find out what's going on with it. It can get Councilman Atkinson, which was the person that originally brought this up. I think the reason he pulled this off is because he was still working on the item. I don't know how another councilperson brings up another councilperson's item. I don't know how that works, but I would... If it was me, I would say table both of those items. And the fourth item would be in-person council meetings. Yes, please resume in-person council meetings. We can distance. We can wear masks. I would love to be able to attend council meetings again. Fifth would be animal control. As I stated earlier, you can't afford it. I know that there's anticipated revenue, but until you realize that revenue for a couple of years, you really don't have that revenue in place. And so the sixth item would be renaming the street to Lander's Lane. Absolutely. It's a great idea, and this is not a part of an apology. This is not a part of anything to do with that. This is that Mayor Lander has been a staple in this community for years. His family has been a staple in this community for years. And even though we disagree in politics, doesn't mean that I don't respect Landers. And guess what? We don't disagree most of the time. When I was in office, we had five to zeros almost all the time. And so absolutely, I support renaming that street to Lander's Lane, and I think it's a great idea, and I think that he's put in a lot of time for this community, a lot more than most other people would put in. Lastly, I hope you table items one and two until the next council, and the staff have more time to look at it because they're going to be the ones that'll be dealing with this. I would like to remind council that there is a code of conduct, and it does involve being respectful to others. It's not very respectful to bring up items that somebody else had already brought up and then pulled off because they were still working on. And with that, I will say thank you, guys, for listening, and I appreciate every one of your time for being on this council. I appreciate it, and to the outgoing members, which, you know, you aren't outgoing yet, but I appreciate everything you guys have both done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearing... Wait a minute. Is there anyone else for public comments? Seeing none? Okay, we have public hearings. We have none. We have the consent calendar, which we have 14 items. Item one is approved the minutes of October 5, 2020, which is a special meeting. Item two is approved minutes of October 15, 2020. Item three is check register September 1, 2020 through September 30, 2020. Item four is unaudited fiscal year 2019, 2020, revenue and expenditures informational only. Item five is authorize the purchase of cloud-based storage system. Item six is authorize city manager to execute a proof of designation form to assist Mid Valley Disposal in collecting e-waste during community cleanup events. Item seven, change to the 2021 Ops Grant Spending Plan. Item eight is adoption of Resolution Number 3990, authorizing the submission of a grant application for the 2020 Active Transportation Program. Item nine, authorize city manager to sign a task order with Fresh Engineering Incorporated to provide construction phase engineering, programming, and startup services for the SCADA system upgrades at the water treatment plant. Item 10 is authorize a city engineer design and construction engineering task order for the rehabilitation of Fresno Street from Harvard to California. Item 11 is adoption of Resolution Number 3991, opposing SB 1120 in an effort to maintain local land use control. Item 12 is consideration of bid award for water treatment plant improvements projects. Item 13, authorize city manager to allocate and spend incorporated rural city cares grant program funds as identified. And item 14 is fire department quarterly report. Is there any item that you would like to pull or discuss? Seeing none? Do we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
No.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Atkin... Or Singleton, excuse me.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, our next item is ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. We have seven items. Our first item is discussion, direction, and potential action regarding city code enforcement. City Manager Marissa Trejo.
Thank you. So this item on the agenda was requested by Councilwoman Stoltz. There is some history in the staff report for you about your options and what you had previously considered. There was a contract with an outside agency, and then we had also provided some cost information about whether or not we filled the position internally. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilwoman Stoltz so that she could lead the discussion on this, and then I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, I brought this back. I've been hearing a lot of complaints about code enforcement, especially through the pandemic, and I hear everybody, and I agree. However, we cannot afford it at this time. And so I brought this back mainly for the record so that everybody could see what it would cost, and I'm all for code enforcement, just not now. It does need to be pushed out a little bit, so I'm trying to wrap up unfinished items that I have or that I'm aware of. So I would like to make the motion that we do not bring back a code enforcement officer at this time.
Any other comments, council? Seeing none? So go ahead.
Nothing.
Somebody... Oh. So are you looking for a motion to table this until a later date?
Well, I don't want to table it. I think it needs to be voted on when you guys bring it up in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to vote on that?
I'll go ahead and second it.
We have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Our next item, item two, is discussion, direction, and potential action regarding updating sensitive receptor distance requirements for specific cannabis operations. Mr. Brewer?
Thank you. This is a future agenda item originally requested by Councilman Atkinson and at the request of Councilwoman Stoltz to bring back at the November meeting, which is tonight's meeting, with the additional information requested by the council at the September 2nd, 2020 meeting. And so at this point, staff is just seeking direction from the council on this item on how to proceed. We did provide some background information regarding our current regulations regarding separation from basically schools as identified in the general plan and in state, and then also specific to retail, just differentiating the requirements for retail as we... As this request is primarily geared towards cannabis operations that are not related to retail. So there is a difference in those, in that distance. The city is currently consistent with the 600-foot radius for storefront retail licenses. However, it does have a wider or a longer distance related to all other activities, such as manufacturing, cultivation, distribution. And so basically, at the last meeting, or in September, the council had requested that the staff provide a map that identified current radiuses from schools, stated in the Planning and Zoning Code, which was the 1,800-foot. And so what staff did is provided some examples or exhibits of the 600-foot radius and then what the existing 18-foot radius is from the Kalinga Unified School District or the school farm, the school locations on Cambridge and Sunset, the future school site on Merced in accordance with the general plan, and then also the Faith Christian Academy. So at this point, I'll open it up to the council, and staff will seek recommendations or any kind of direction from the council.
Council, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to see...
Yeah, I'd like to see if we could table this one. My original agenda item asked for a thousand-foot radius from schools, which is above and beyond what the state asks for. I'm still doing research on this to see what the property values, the difference will be in property values. And I'd like to table that for now.
Well, it's my item that I brought back. You already had your chance. So if I may interject, I think there's companies wanting to know what to do. It's been tabled once for a couple of months. So we have all of our information that the mayor had originally requested. We've had more than enough time to review it. So I think that we need to vote on it tonight so everybody can move forward.
Again, it was my item and you basically took my items and then made them for yourself. I'm still doing gathering information on this. I asked, we don't want, I'm still talking, please. We don't want a 600-foot radius. We want a thousand-foot radius from the schools and even the description, the pictures that were given to us, it has a 600-foot radius. Well, originally we asked for a thousand-foot radius.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
He is concerned about the footage. So that would be something that could be discussed right now. It doesn't need to come back.
Any other comments on this?
For me, my thing on this, the 1800 feet, I wouldn't want to change that myself because of distancing. So for me, even if it was 600 or 1,000, that, that, I would say it'd have to be left as it is. I mean, and I understand Kalinga is small and, but I don't think putting buildings on top of buildings is going to make it any better. So I think the businesses will need to expand out as opposed to expanding inward.
Any other discussion, comments? Council, what would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion to vote.
Okay. And what is, what is that motion?
I would like to go with what we originally said, what we told the citizens, and leave it at the 1800 feet. Not bring it in. And if in the future the city wants to look into extending the city limits, then they can do that.
Okay.
I've been approached as well, so.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second on that one.
We have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye.
Excuse me. Why, Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next item, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding the cancellation of the city's cannabis monitoring and compliance contract with SCI Consulting. Mr. Brewer?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a continuation of a future agenda item requested by Councilman Atkinson and request to be brought back at the November fifth meeting by Councilwoman Stoltz. And staff is just seeking direction from the council on this item. As we all know, the city accounts, the city of Kalinga currently contracts SCI Consulting Group to provide monthly inspection services at all of the city's cannabis facilities to ensure both state and local regulatory compliance. SCI operates on a task order basis billed monthly for each facility they inspect. The city council has expressed interest in discontinuing services with SCI and utilize the staff have been funded by cannabis licensing fees to perform the administrative tasks needed to facilitate the city's cannabis programs, including inspection services and video surveillance. The city of Kalinga charges an annual licensing fee and revenue raising fee to all commercial cannabis businesses operating in the city. Specifically, the license fees paid by the cannabis operators are made up of the city direct cost, which includes costs associated with the RIMS, which is the records management system, to manage the operations and employees, one officer position and two cannabis clerk positions. The other part of the license fee is a direct pass-through cost consultant fee, which is SCI for providing inspection services. And I provided a breakdown of all of our license fees and what is, what accumulates to the city's fee and what is SCI's annual fee for the total licensing fee that we charge. So if the city decides to cancel the contract with SCI, it would reduce the city's cannabis licensing fees by the amount SCI is charging for compliance checks. In addition, staff recommends that there'll be, be a three-month transition period where the officer would be performing the inspections, who would be performing the inspections would have an opportunity to shadow and train with the SCI member in order to fully understand the inspection checklist and what to look for in each inspection. It was also recently brought to our attention and recommended by SCI that the city would reduce the frequency of inspections due to the continued compliance of the operators. They recommended that quarterly inspections would be reasonable. Therefore, if council chooses to discontinue services with SCI, staff recommends moving, moving to quarterly inspections to reduce the burden on city staff as well. Some of the alternatives that staff's provided just for set council consideration is, one, don't cancel services with SCI and remain status quo on monthly inspections. Two would be continuing services with SCI, reduce inspection frequency to quarterly and reduce licensing fees accordingly. And then also the, another one would be cancel services with SCI with a 90-day transition to allow for staff training and adjust to quarterly inspections. So if the city discontinues its contract with SCI, licensing fees would be reduced, but there would be no savings to the city since SCI's costs are directly passed on to the cannabis operators. The result would be lower licensing fees for the operators. If the city chooses to continue services with SCI and reduce inspection frequency quarterly, then SCI's fee would be reduced by 75%. So if there's any other questions, that's my report. And if the council has any questions or we're just seeking direction from the council on how you'd like to proceed on this particular item.
Counsel, any questions?
What would happen, this is probably to Darren. What would happen to the employees and PD that do this work?
The employees that would do this work?
Yeah.
Well, the, the funding funds one position for an officer to go out and do the same thing. They would just need training on what, what they need to look for and what they need to do. It would be a collateral duty for an officer to have to do this. So on top of his regular patrol duties, this would be an extra duty for him or her.
Okay.
But we wouldn't lose any funding for officers at all?
No.
If we, if we afford this or got rid of it, right?
Correct, to my knowledge.
Just expand their duties. This would be added to the quarterly.
Myself, like, I hate having something and all of a sudden get rid of it because sometimes that means you don't need it at all. I mean, you didn't need it in the first place. So I would rather just reduce their deal to quarterly and keep them, but do it quarterly. That still saves the 75% of their pay. I mean, of their costs for their permit. I would, I would rather go ahead and keep them right now because there was a reason we, we did it. And I just don't want to quit them. And if we can reduce their, their fees 75%, that's quite a bit. And that's what I, I would rather do myself.
Okay, so if we reduce their fees, is that going to reduce our income that we get from them? I mean?
No, it would actually be, and what it is, is a direct pass-through. So as you can see, like say for just type six manufacturing, non-volatile, SCI's fee is $33,772. If we say cancel the contract, the fee total for that license would reduce to 32,338, which is what the city's portion of that fee is. Because the total licensing fee for a type six manufacturing is 66,110. So that 33,000 would go away. That's SCI's fee, but that's a direct pass-through. So if we charge 33,772 as part of that overall fee, we are on a task, on a monthly task order with the, with SCI. And the cannabis company or operator would, it's a direct pass-through. So they pay that fee and it comes in as revenue and it goes straight out as like kind of, we call it reimbursable.
I, I like the idea of what Mr. Ramsey had to say. I don't want to drop them completely right now. It would be like starting over. And then I know that the police department is shorthanded. And he, police chief can tell you, he's got his hands full and needs every officer more than he has him already. So I think that that would be taking away from what is needed in law enforcement. Am I correct, Darren?
Yes, sir. We had a pretty busy day today. We had a couple incidents that tied us up for most of the day.
So I would like to suggest that if we could do like what Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey suggested, if everybody agreeable with that?
That'd be the seventy-five.
I have one more comment for you.
Okay.
Some of what I was hearing from the community was, you know, concern that if we get away with this, then how are we going to know what's going on and the potential for bad things and all that kind of stuff? But there actually is an ordinance in place. So that is section nine dash five point one two eight. And I talked with Darren about that so that I could have clarification myself. So with that in place, Sean, do you know that off the top of your head?
What?
The nine dash five.
That's just the, that's our cannabis regulations.
Right, so it's still.
It has to do with video, watching them through video feed.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's an extra layer of protection, if you will, that I guess the citizens don't realize is there. Which is a good thing.
Yeah, we, we actually, I think the citizens do know that because that was part of our, our deal, our thing that we wanted to have it monitored, each one of the businesses monitored out there. And I think that's what we agreed to on that because I remember that. But I, I think if we do this quarterly, we just have a backup, make sure everybody's in compliance and everything too. And because I think they, could you tell us what they check for? Sean?
What, in terms of inspections? They, they, they've basically established a checklist based on a lot of our regulations and state regulations. So they basically look at the full operation from track and trace to inventory controls, the distribution, confirming manifests from product that received, product that's sent out. Because these operators, depending on their type of, the type of entity, they have to track the product coming in and going out. If they're distributors, checking manifest to make sure the product they have stored is what they actually have on hand. So they're really tracking a lot of the, the operations. Also included, making sure that the regulations that we have in place locally are being met in terms of employees, making sure they're wearing proper identification and making sure that the security protocols are in place when they come into the facilities. And so there's a lot of things that they look for. I know that they probably spend over an hour at most places going through and double checking, making sure inventory controls are in place. Because the biggest concern, I think initially, was that we wanted to ensure that we didn't have product or any type of materials walking off of these facilities, which is what the state's looking for too. They are just not in these facilities. So it is critical, one way or another, we have, you know, oversight, which in either scenario, we would have that oversight.
Okay, thank you.
So is it everybody's desire to leave it as is or to go with what Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey has stated earlier?
I saw it was a pro Tim.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What'd you say?
He wants to go with the Mayor Pro Tim.
Can you explain that one more time for me, Ron Ramsey?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce their fees to 75%. It's about 75%, but they still do quarterly for us.
Instead of monthly.
Instead of monthly.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So you have a motion and a second? May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
No.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, you have direction there. All right, our next item is item four, which is introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number eight four five, amending the ordinance related to construction water meters. Mr. Miller?
Hello, everyone. This is a very, very short ordinance rewrite. Essentially just shifts who is going to be installing the construction meters and where they may be, clarifies where they may be installed. It just shows in writing that, you know, they may be used within the, the water service area. And if it is outside of our water service area, there must be a reasonable, you know, use, like a fire or, you know, some other reason. It's not a very long section. It's essentially one paragraph. With the second reading, I believe there will be a, a policy that will be shown to you and hopefully passed by a resolution. And it will further show what the policy will entail. And I'll be happy to answer anything that you may want to know.
Any questions or comments, council? Do we have a motion to introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number eight forty-five, amending the ordinance related to construction water meters?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
May I have roll call, please?
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, our next item is number five, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding resuming in-person city council meetings. City manager Marissa Trejo.
Thank you. So this item was requested as a future agenda item by Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey. And it's on here for discussion so the council can decide if you want to move back towards in-person city council meetings. If you do have in-person council meetings, you can also decide if you want to sort of be back to the way things were before. Everyone would need to be masked and sat at least six feet apart. Or if you would just like the council and staff to be back in person with the public still attending via Zoom. So those are really your options for discussion tonight. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey, since this was his item.
What I was thinking is, since we're in the red, red phase of our, our quarantine right now, I would rather just have the council and staff at the meeting, but everybody could see us on Zoom. And then if, once we go back or go to, go down to the next, I don't know what the next color is, but then we could bring our, our, our people in. But I think it would be better if we could have all the staff and council together during our meetings because we have questions and stuff. And I think that's, it's easier to get answers that fast. But I would rather just have our Zoom meetings continue and just have staff. And it would give us a way to kind of, kind of go into it again without putting everybody at risk. And I don't think we would have to do the temperatures and all that stuff. But, but I think we should all wear masks and, and at our meetings and stuff. But that's just my thoughts right now. We can, we can talk about it.
Counsel, any other input?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. We could think, you know, small steps and keeping everybody safe by wearing masks. I agree.
So is it everyone's desire to start this? So is it everyone's desire to start this process at our next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want a consensus or the uh?
Yeah, I need a consensus. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask?
Those opposed?
Oh, sorry.
I also vote aye. Okay, so next council meeting, we will be there. And staff and we will all have masks and the rest of the community can Zoom, correct?
Eric, can I ask a quick question of one of my staff members?
Yes.
Uh, Larry, just wanted to confirm, we are set up and we, we can get that accomplished by December third, right?
I've, um, I've been ready for weeks.
I think, I think all ready. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Our next item is discussion, direction and potential action regarding renaming the portion of Durian in front of City Hall to Lander Lane. I am going to recuse myself from that because somebody for sure, since they think I'm under criminal investigation, lord knows whatever else, would say, ah, he's doing it again. So I'm going to recuse myself from that. So uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey, would you handle that please?
Yeah, Ron, but go back to six, you skipped one.
Oh, I did. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back. Discussion, direction, potential action regarding animal control officer position.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So that is an item that was requested by Councilwoman Stoltz. And there is some information on the staff report as far as the history of what we've gone through and what we've done with animal control, as well as what the cost for uh, full-time and part-time positions are. I will say that um, hiring an animal control officer isn't going to solve all the problems that the public would like solved. There's still an issue with capacity at the shelter. And so even when we had a full-time animal control officer, he was not picking up stray dogs. He was only picking up sick and injured dogs. But I'll go ahead and turn this over to Councilwoman Stoltz because this is her item that she requested.
Thanks, Marissa. Um, I brought this back because I've been the one that's been most involved um, control end of things since I've been on council. And I was detailed in my requests of all of this data so that the public can understand exactly how much approximately, I should say, it's going to cost. And, and I wanted that out there to the public and I want to give a special shout out of thanks to Nathan for agreeing with me that at this time, we cannot afford it. That's why I brought this back. Um, was due to the public's concern and outcry for an officer and for that department to start up again. And, and we just, we just can't do it. That's something for the future. So, um, with that, I wanted to vote to not do it so that the next council um, is clear that we don't have this money to spend.
Okay.
Why are we even voting? What's the, what's the, what's the need to vote on anything? We're not doing anything.
It's my item, but thank you for your opinion.
Right. So we don't need to do anything. And it seems like if we vote on it, then the next council will have to wait a year to revote on it. So why even vote on it? We're not doing anything. If the next council decides that they want animal control, then they should be able to get animal control instead of waiting a year to get it.
I would like to make a motion to vote that we do not have an animal control officer for the next year.
We don't have an animal control officer. How are we voting to not have one when we don't have one?
Adam, didn't you receive a letter from my attorney not to talk to me?
Okay, all right, all right, all right, all right. Hey, hey, this is inappropriate time to do this. Let's uh, let's add some decorum here, please.
We don't have an animal control officer. Why are we voting to not have an animal control officer when we don't have an animal control officer?
Okay, and I absolutely agree with you. So let's, let's um, table this item until future time when the funding's there and we'll go with that. Is that agreeable with the council?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Singleton?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I got a yes there. All right, we're going to move on. Thank you. We're going to move on to discussion, direction and potential action article regarding naming the portion of Durian in front of City Hall to Lander Lane. As I had stated earlier, I'm going to recuse myself from that item. Mr. Ramsey, would you please take over for that?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I guess they would like to uh, rename the portion in front of City Hall to Lander Lane. Marissa, could you tell us what that would uh, involve?
Sure. So I actually have provided um, Sean's name as the one to lead this discussion because um, he oversees public work, so he can better explain what that would entail. But this was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson. And um, it would be the block in front of City Hall. Uh, the cost to change the street signs in that area is pretty minimal. Um, I believe the quote I got from Public Works was about a hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then it would just be a matter of staff updating uh, anything that we have addresses on, uh, business cards, invoices, things like that. But I'll go ahead and let Sean add to uh, anything he wants to say.
Yeah. So essentially, I mean, making a, making a change um, to an existing street sign would just require council action to rename the city street um, as it, as it kind of addresses in uh, six, nine, six. I know that Marissa probably had provided some additional information um, regarding street naming. The council has a street naming uh, like a street name list for future subdivisions. So when we have new subdivisions come in, uh, there are a list of street names that have been established by previous councils um, regarding that. And that was, I think, by ordinance uh, six, nine, six back in two thousand and four. And basically, the ordinance was kind of coupled with the policy where they, they created a list of names. But the, also the ordinance outlines the process and procedure for renaming the city streets. I know that um, from what we saw, the file that Lander Street already is an approved uh, street name as part of a future subdivision on Merced and Jane. However, ultimately, the way that the ordinance is written is that it just, the city council shall name or rename city streets is provided in this section. Just making sure that, you know, there's no unusual spellings or difficult pronunciations. That a street name shall not be duplicative or similar in sound or spelling to another street name. And it really wants concurrence from the police department, fire department, and also public works department regarding just kind of overall safety. Um, and then basically, it should have uh, you know, certain parameters that the ordinance spells out in terms of the adoption and renaming the street. And it should be named um, a deep name or renamed as stated in the resolution. Um, and so if there's, and then would also, obviously would have to contact the postal service. And uh, so at this point, you know, at the, the request is to change part of Durian, I think between fifth and sixth um, to Lander Lane. And so I, I'm not sure if Marissa's received any comments from the fire chief or police chief in terms of logistics of uh, kind of bisecting a uh, a street uh, within, within a, within a segment of a street. Typically, streets are segmented from east and west. This would be on the, I think on the east part of Durian uh, for one block um, is, is from my understanding. But I'll, uh, you know, Councilman Atkinson, I think uh, you had brought this item forward. So if you wanted to uh, go ahead and speak on it, I'll, we'll open it up to you and continue the discussion.
Sure. I think, I think anyone who spends twenty-something plus years on this council uh, deserves something like this. I know Ron has been twenty-plus years on this council. He has been mayor for probably over half that time. And it just can't be seen anywhere else in Colinga's history. It, it's crazy when you think about how much time he's put forward, put forth into this council, into the city and into the people who, who live here. And this is the least I think we can do to honor him, honor his legacy and honor his time as, as mayor and um, councilman. He's been through a lot. If you, if you ask him stories about some of the things that he's been through while being on council, some of it's kind of unbelievable. It's crazy, some of the things that he's been through. And I think, like I said, I think the people would definitely be for this. And I think that uh, the council should be for this too.
And if I can add one additional thing, just based on the policy that um, it does require a public hearing to change this. So would have to come back to the council if the council so chooses. It would have to be posted at the location of where the name change would occur. So it does allow for the uh, the public to provide comments as well. So um, just kind of going through what the ordinance specifies. And Mario, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that's kind of my interpretation of the, of the uh, the process that would, would require a uh, a public hearing.
This, this is Mario. Yeah, that's correct.
So I have a question, probably, I don't know, Sean. Uh, but what about the Durian family? Like this was named after them.
Well, there's still part of the street called Durian.
Right. And there will, there's a, a pre-approved Lander Lane. So why would Lander have two?
Well, we could change the other, we could change the other Lander Lane to something else. But I, this is a, this particular street is actually three different names. It's uh, Durian Street. Isn't this Cedar also?
No, it's, you have east and west Durian. That's, that's bisected. Cedar is a block.
Cedar is a block overall.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Cedar then Birch.
Okay. You know, uh, since we're going to have a public hearing too, we could, uh, a lot more people could talk about it that way. And um, I think if we, we agree to do it tonight, we still, that's still not saying we're going to do it. We still have to have a public hearing. And then we make the, the uh, vote at the public hearing. So do you have to have two public hearings on that or just one?
Um, I think it's just one public hearing, notice, public hearing. So which means it'd be ten-day public notice. Ten days prior to the hearing as well as uh, you have to post the public hearing at least three places along the city street to be named or renamed.
Yeah. Because um, it, it is going to, it, you know, it sounds like it's not going to be expensive, but it's going to be kind of expensive for uh, people to change a lot of things because businesses have to change all their headlines on their, all their all their paperwork and everything. But uh, I think we could do it. But uh, I know the bank across the street would have to do it and, but that, that could all come out in the public hearing. So I think, I think we ought to go ahead and do it and then um, let the public hearing speak for itself.
So I, I asked the mayor earlier and he told me that he didn't want it and that he was going to recuse himself. And there is also the cost, like, like Ron said, that, you know, you, you look at the, I mean, the cost of the sign is minimal. But the letterhead, the business cards, website stuff's easy, all the banking. Then that's going to have, you know, affect the customers of the bank and the address on their checks. I mean, there's more to it than just a hundred and twenty-five dollar sign.
Let's move it to the public hearing and then in the meantime, we'll figure here from the bank on what they say is going to need to be changed. And the Els Clubs, I do believe those are the only two businesses that'll have to change anything.
That would be the Eagles Club.
Whatever.
Uh, is that in a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
What's the motion to, to, till Monday?
Sorry, they, sorry, let me, let me say that again. Uh, yeah, I'm making a motion to move this forward to a public hearing. So we're not approving a street name change. We're just moving it forward to a public hearing. And during the meantime, I'm going to talk to the bank and see if anything needs to be changed.
Okay.
And I'll invite them to the public hearing. So that way they can say if it's a terrible idea, they can say, hey, this is a terrible idea.
Yeah, technically uh, the city will send out uh, stuff to any of the businesses it affects. And then we'll, we'll get their uh, replies from like that.
You have to direct us to do that. I don't know if it's required that we send out mailed notices, but if that's the council's direction, the city could send letters specifically to the property owners.
Yeah, just on this block.
Yeah, I, I would like to see those letters go out.
Exactly, yeah. Transparency is the best. Okay.
So then Adam's got a, a motion?
Yes.
Well, I'm making a motion. Sorry, okay, thank you.
Adam's got a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Stolt?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey?
I vote aye. Okay, thank you. Um, our next item will be uh, oh. Hold on. It's mine, just click it off, yeah.
Ron, I'm back.
We're going to announcements now. Ron's back. Ron can take over.
Okay. The next item is eight. Discussion, direction and potential action regarding, oh, it's, no, sorry. I'm going to be okay. You guys, I only have one more meeting left. No, okay, I'm allowed. I'm getting old. Okay, our next one is announcement, city manager's announcements.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we still have funds available for the rural cities grant that the county gave us with the CARES Act funds. And so if anyone needs rental assistance or if they are a small business that needs a small business grant, those programs are on the city's website. I've also posted the link on Facebook. And the deadline for that, I believe, is November nineteenth. And if anyone has any questions, uh, they can call me at nine, three, five, fifteen, thirty-three, extension one, eleven. Or they can email info@colinga.com and we can tell them exactly where the link is or answer any questions, help them with the application or anything that they need.
Okay, thank you. Any other uh, council members' announcements?
Two or three. Um, I got a text to remind everybody about the Mid Valley Free Dump Day on November fourteenth. So mark your calendars. And number two, I want to give a big congratulations to James Horn and Manny Ramirez. I have supported and endorsed both of them and they won. So big congratulations to the future council members. And I wanted to make it clear for my number three item that I wanted code for our animal control brought back when there's money. And I wanted it to wait at least a year because with budgets coming up in six months, there's a lot on the table that we need and something's going to have to give. So I didn't appreciate all that negativity on my item. And that's it.
Okay, under mayor's announcements?
Mayor, this is Marissa. I'm sorry. The police chief also asked me to mention that they are doing a fundraiser dinner on Monday, November ninth for the K-9 Foundation. Um, I believe that Chevron's barbecue and tri-tip. But for more information, you can reach out to Darren or his wife, Suzie, and they'll have some information for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And um, okay, I'll get ahold of him. Okay, under mayor's announcements, I'd just like to say one thing is that I want to tell you all how much I appreciate you working with me and uh, especially I would like to send out a thank you to those who um, um, want to honor me by doing a road name change, you know, whether it happens or not, I appreciate the fact that the gesture is there. And I also want to say, I find it absolutely comical that people think I'm under investigation. Because I was the last to ever hear about something like that. And I, I know whatever, that's, that's funny. To me, that's very comical, actually. Anyway, um, again, thank you all. Let's go on to future agenda items. Do we have any?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'm going to say that I want to change the distance requirements for cannabis operations to a thousand feet. I'd like to see it come back in January, possibly February, because I'm done with all um, research.
Okay. Any other?
I, I heard some rumors that the hospital is going to be possibly opening this Monday. I would like a future agenda item to ask uh, Mr. Singh or um, a representative from the hospital to come and talk, talk about the hospital at our next meeting.
Perfect. You know, that's really good, Ron. I like that idea very much. That way people will know what's going on. Okay, any others? Seeing none? Seeing none, we're gonna be going into closed session. We have two items. One, number one is real property negotiations, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight. Conference with real property negotiators, property APN number is zero-six-five-dash-one-four-two-dash-eight-two, Kalinga. City negotiators, city manager, Marissa Trejo, and city attorney, Mario Zamora. Negotiating parties are Andrew Airy, under negotiation price and terms of payment. Item two is conference with labor negotiators, government code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. City negotiators, city manager, Marissa Trejo, and city attorney, Mario Zamora. Employee organization is the Kalinga Police Officers Association. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for your participation, and all have a very pleasant evening.